Good morning and welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting of October thirty first. Happy Halloween. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our board is fully assembled. We have Commissioner Cherichello and Commissioner Coyle.
Good morning.
And my, happy Halloween and myself, Commissioner Godu. And we'll move right along into the RFP openings and awards inmate personal care items.
I moved to award the proposal for inmate personal care items to three vendors, Bob Barker, Geriatric Medical, and Americare as outlined in the memo from the Superintendent for the period of November first, twenty twenty four, through October thirty first, twenty twenty six, with a total budgeted amount not to exceed eight thousand five hundred dollars as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Second, any discussion?
This is a lot of the same vendors that we've used historically and so.
Pretty Monday.
I'm wondering.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello? And I vote yes. And janitorial supplies?
I move to award the proposal for janitorial supplies to three vendors, Pyramid Products, School Products, for an amount not to exceed one thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars and fifteen cents, Conlin Office Products for an amount not to exceed five thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents, and Clean Orama for an amount not to exceed three thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and eighty-eight cents for the period of November first, twenty twenty four, through October thirty first, twenty twenty five, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Any discussion?
Three for most bids.
Uh, Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, historical book restoration from the Registry of Deeds.
I move to award the proposal for historic book restoration to Copile Technologies Incorporated for an amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and authorize the Acting Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Register of Deeds.
Second, any discussion on expanding this?
Just a quick question. Uh, I think Kathy is on, so this looks like a lower number than previous years. Is that accurate?
It's usually a hundred thousand dollars.
It's a.
Yeah, yes, it is. I mean, obviously, we do a series of books. This is what the pricing is. I mean, if I can, if I, and that's, I'm trying to think, I, if I go back later on during the year to do some more, we will, or I'll do binders, one or the other.
Okay.
But it's you, it's usually a hundred thousand dollars by bill for annually.
Right.
And we used Cofile, just in reference to this award, Cofile has been a partner on this restoration project historically, so no pun intended.
I'm not complaining that the number's lower. Just carries, that's all.
Kathy buying for coming under budget. For her whole department, probably.
Excellent.
All right, so on the motion to, for the historical book restoration, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, move on to the consent agenda.
Um, I move to approve the October tenth, twenty twenty four, public and non-public meeting minutes and the October seventeenth, twenty twenty four, public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? I have a small correction. On page one of the, uh, public minutes.
From which date, the tenth or the seventeenth?
The tenth. There's a sentence says, "The original motion was voted on two to one." Two of us voted no. I, I think it should say one to two.
That's correct.
That's usually the.
Yeah.
The, I mean, it's still, it says that who voted?
It explained it, but it was just the way the number, inverting the numbers.
Yeah, because I think that that would, minor correction is what I would suggest.
Thank you. So I would amend my motion to include that inversion of the numbers.
All right, so on the motion, Commissioner Cherichello, Commissioner Coyle? I vote yes.
Thank you, Lila.
Everything else look good.
Yeah, I have one question that we, I just.
Well, I just got.
No, it's fine, so. I move to, oh, sorry, surplus equipment. I'm going ahead of you.
Yes, all right, surplus equipment request.
I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to NAMF RSA twenty-eight A, declare two thousand eleven Ford Econo Band Box Truck from the Department of Corrections surplus that the item could be sold through competitive bidding.
Second.
Any discussion on this old van?
This is joyful because it means we, uh, we have a new box truck, so that is a good thing.
Uh, all right, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, we have, uh, recruitment report for HR and nursing. Uh, anybody, this information, anybody have any comments on what was submitted to us? I think it's, we're moving in the right direction, but.
I think, I mean, I think it's incredible, which is a credit to Allison, to Autumn, to Chantel. I mean, when I am looking at what the prospective hiring is, and I just have to get to the page, it's like, uh, when you, uh, knew who are onboarding, new hires slated for the, um, beginning of November, two full-time LNA's, two weekender, two LNA's, a full-time MNA, two full-time LPNs, housekeeper, and the pro, the managers for the pilot program. Like, that is, I mean, we haven't seen.
The best report we've seen.
Like overwhelmingly, like, this is the most encouraging news I've seen in a really, really long time. I mean, in years, as it relates to long-term care. It is overwhelming, and I think when we, we analyze the data from, with respect to applications, the application pool has, um, has ballooned significantly as a result of probably that Quick App. And I think implementation of that Quick App has made such a big difference. And the other thing I thought was so interesting and really encouraging is when we look at interviews to offer accepted, we're selling people. When you look at how many people, like, uh, interviews, five interviews, four offers accepted. So, um, when people are getting interviewed and they're, they're liking, I mean, we know, we already know we have something great to sell here in terms of working at the county. And when you see those numbers, um, go from interest in individuals, interview schedule to the offer accepted, I mean, that's outstanding. So, uh, it's just really, really encouraging and is, I guess, I, you know, thank you to everybody, the team that has worked so collaboratively to make big changes. If we can stay on a similar trajectory, it really is outstanding.
Yeah.
I think we all agree.
Yeah, I, I agree. Really happy to see that we kind of turned the corner. The LNA, MNA, uh, October eleventh and twenty-fourth, we had fifteen applications. But more importantly, out of the three screenings, we had eight, and then we got four accepted. So it looks like we've turned the corner there. Uh, looks like the plan is working, which is really good because.
Thank you.
That's well needed. I, and I know that, I know the RN is not as needed as the LPNs. But I'm hoping that, uh, that'll just take a little bit more time and we'll get the RN in. But I, I, I'm really impressed. I'm really happy that we're moving in the right directions now. Also, the Neo, the Neo Gov, you know, you got eighty-four applications that came in across the board for all jobs from October eleventh to the twenty-fourth, which is great. Like, uh, LNA's fourteen in that, in that period. That's awesome. Housekeeping, fourteen. So remember what we're doing. Keep up the good work.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's move on to our accounts payable approvals.
I move to approve the October thirty first, twenty twenty four accounts payable list total of one million six hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second.
Any discussion on this accounts payable list?
When we look at this AP run, you can see that, that obviously there's a lot from long-term care services, but, um, with both, um, contracts for, um, for LNA's and other care, but also, um, the, some of the contracts were things like Health Pro Heritage. And I just want to recognize that, um, this is something Chantel coming in is analyzing those contracts, seeing if there's some fat we can tighten up or some things, things that we can move in-house. Again, just to highlight in terms of, uh, I guess, Chantel's efforts that we're not looking exclusively at contracts for purposes of staffing, but also some of our service contracts and the necessity of them, or ways we can work more efficiently.
The thing that jumps out at me is we'd still get big numbers for contract nursing. I mean, can't wait to see that go away.
But.
But we're on our way, obviously, with the recruit.
And, um, yeah, both with recruiting and then as we get the, we have the update today of, um, sort of where we are from a budgetary standpoint. And credit, I know, to the team, Lain, and you being a big part of that too with, um, documenting and making sure we have that spreadsheet with, uh, and we're under budget. We're on track and under budget year-to-date for, um, for that line for service staffing. So that's great.
Okay, so, uh, on the motion to approve our accounts payable list, Commissioner Cherichello?
Yeah.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, move on to Commissioners' Office Commissioners' Updates. Anybody have any updates they'd like to share?
Just briefly, we had the, um, we met with Autumn, uh, last Thursday and did the Rock Talk podcast on some of the changes in, uh, the, our pricing model at the Water Tower Cafe. Thank you for Autumn for helping it makes it that, uh, podcast go so seamless. And for anybody who may watch this but hasn't, uh, checked out the podcast, that's accessible if you have more questions about some of the pricing model and sort of why we implemented the changes that we did.
Yeah, and I echo that sentiment. I, I think that was a good idea to get that. We, we dove into detail, but we're on the twenty minutes, I think, maybe a half hour, but we were able to explain everything, I think, in full detail. So, um, people, I mean, would have a better understanding of who we have Commissioners come from. So it was, it, it worked out well.
Very good. Uh, I, I was contacted by a Seabrook resident who was interested in purchasing a cemetery lot in the, an old section of a cemetery in Seabrook. And, uh, she's been working on trying to purchase it, but apparently the county owns this lot, which is really odd, uh, that we would find this. But somehow the County Commissioners in nineteen thirty-five purchased this lot for fifteen dollars. It happens to be near some relatives of hers and she wants to, uh, buy this. So, uh, we're doing a little bit of, uh, work on that to see what that procedure is. It'll be brought up at next, uh, at, at our next meeting.
I saw.
And the agenda, uh, to discuss how we might handle it.
If, I mean, since we're bringing it up right now, my suggestion is that we, and maybe we can work on this for next meeting, is that we just, to me, and I've reviewed everything as, because you sent the email out, my suggestion is that we just quick claim deed the, um, the RD to the town of Seabrook because they're in the best position to, um, to make this, like, that's their purview mostly. They do, you know, that's their cemetery that they are typically selling the plots for, that if we quit claim it, then it makes it clean and easy and they can go through their systems to, um, to let someone buy it, if this individual, it seems like she's been working with them more extensively.
Well, she's tried to, but she hasn't gotten the cooperation of the county yet. And that's was the, because the Seabrook was supposed to contact us.
Yeah.
And I guess that was.
But so that we're not in the, uh.
It's a six hundred dollar lot. That's what she told me, that's the, the superintendent of the cemetery was willing to sell it to her, but he didn't own it, so.
I don't think we should be in the business of adjudicating who, um, who gets the lot. Let's, let's put it back. I mean, we're not talking about foregoing significant, like, revenue source to the county. I think we're in better stage because we should not be in that position that we just deed the lot to, um, back to the town of Seabrook. And we, maybe in the next week, we can facilitate how to effectively do that. I mean, I think a quick, quick claim deed should just satisfy it and then we can hand it back over to them.
Sounds good to me.
Kathy want to chime in? I don't know if she.
I see your head nodding. I think she's agreeing with Kate.
Yeah.
Before she does chime in, I just want to say, A, nineteen thirty, I don't know what the circumstances are that, that we, the Rockingham County actually own it. Is, was it a lean type situation that, that, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out why the.
We paid fifteen dollars for it. I, I, I can't imagine why, but.
Yeah, so what did you, what did you have, Kathy?
All I will say is that I agree with, uh, Commissioner Coyle that that, that deed, that property needs to go back to the town. Most, that's exactly how it's usually handled at most towns. And back in nineteen thirty-five, I would assume, you know, remember, we're dealing with people who didn't have money because it was the poor farm, right? And that'd be somebody in this family. That's what they used. They paid, they paid it over to the county. We didn't, I didn't have no belief that the county bought a cemetery lot. I think it was given to the county as a trade for room and board. So that's my take.
Is this, Kathy, you've been, you've been here thirty years. Is this the first time you've seen this?
Yeah, I was, I was surprised because I said, geez, the only cemetery stuff I know we have is out back, out, you know, out, out behind, you know, other than that. This was surprising to me. But, you know, I mean, these things happen, as you know, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's like the simple, clean, easy way, give it back to the town, the town can do, you know, and then we're not getting involved in a selection process where we, yeah. So that's what I.
Yeah, that's not our business. We don't want to be involved in that.
We might have a, we have a fifteen dollar write-off.
He's never on the books. Or known to be on the books.
I don't need to be, uh.
There, there are a few county RSAs on, on real property, but.
I, yeah, I don't know what.
What, what, have you looked at those?
Well, a, a little bit, but, I mean, they're kind of different spots. One of them has no correlation to it because it deals with engaging the services of a real estate professional. That's totally, that's totally, but they do have, I wish that there was a better thing on, it seemed like in one spot, it's like, there's certain dollar specials. But in another spot, there's no mention of the dollar specials. I, I do doubt that it is within the authority of the Board of Commissioners to buy and sell real estate as we need, so.
Yeah.
I don't think there'll be any difficulty in giving it back to Seabrook. I just want to make sure that they're, they want it and they, I think they do, but.
Okay.
They can use six hundred bucks, it's more revenue than them.
Agreed. Okay, uh, we'll discuss that next week to take action.
So, yeah, perhaps we can get it on the agenda for next week as a motion to.
I think it's.
Yeah, thank you.
It's already in the works.
It's like.
She's, Leila's on top of it.
Yes.
All right, let's move on to.
Allow me into the.
Moving on to Human Resources. We have a conference, NHAC Conference Raffle Gift Basket Donation.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Human Resources to purchase items for the county gift basket entry in the NHAC raffle up to the, the approximate total of amount of two hundred and fifty dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Any discussion on this donation? It's a raffle gift. All counties have put something in.
They do whatever, yeah.
Yeah, and I assume this is similarly priced to what other counties are, are doing.
Yeah.
So we're.
I was the same with last year. I haven't inflated it.
Okay, good. All right, Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, repurposing positions in long-term care services.
I move to, uh, approve a repurpose of two long-term care positions, MNA full-time and sewing aid part-time for one nurse practitioner occupational health services position effective December first, twenty twenty four, as approved by the Rockingham County Executive Committee, with the caveat of our approval on December, on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion on this?
We had already discussed, just from a background perspective, we had already discussed this and we're, um, you know, it was just a matter of timing and putting it on the agenda because we are all in favor of it. The Executive Committee decided that rather than scheduling a separate meeting, that they would hear, entertain, um, approval of this conditioned upon our approval. And given that we had already collectively discussed this and thought that this is a really, uh, great idea, the repurposing was, it's great. It's like, and when we talked about the savings, the dollar savings, it's significant. Um, the repurposing, the, the financial impact of the repurposing with the new position is about thirty thousand dollars, but we're going to save hundreds of thousands of dollars on, uh, eliminating that contract, so.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, moving on to long-term care services, CCO School of Technology, LNA student clinical affiliation agreements. That's a lot.
Woo-hoo. I move to approve the CCO School of Technology, LNA students clinical affiliation agreement effective January first, twenty twenty five, with an annual renewal and authorize the Acting Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Services.
Second.
Discussion?
This is great. I mean, we're going to get students in here to do their training. They'll get to see what a great organization is, is in the process. Um, I think being generally, when you think about teaching hospitals, they're always at the cutting edge and it's invigorating for both the, um, sort of for everyone in the building. So, um, this is just a great opportunity and, um, thank you to, uh, the team at Long-Term Care for, um, putting this together.
All right, Commissioner Cherichello?
Yeah.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Uh, nurses' salary line month, monthly budget review. Any discussion on that?
I'm, I'm just going to say, um, that, that the matrix works, looking at it from every two weeks. Should have been do this earlier. Would have saved a lot of headaches earlier. But, um, happy to see that, you know, we fixed an issue. And, uh, you know, I think that this is, this is a great, great matrix to look at. It follows as we go, so that's, that's awesome.
Thank you. I know you're working. You're really, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Yeah, it's, it's excellent information and we're below budget. And, um, we're in the right place and so we know exactly where we are. We, we were not focused on it before and this is helpful. Thank you.
And just for the public, we're, um, under budget by three percent right now. Hopefully that number will.
By how much?
Three percent to date for this, um. Yes, and so hopefully as, what'd you say?
For the, for the, oh.
Year-to-date.
Yeah.
And hope the idea conceptually is that if we continue to onboard that, um, that amount can grow, right? We can grow the, um, the savings.
It's close there.
Okay. Uh, let's move on to the Sheriff's Office. So we have a change order request.
I move to approve a change order request for Island Tech Services from an amount not to exceed seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars to be paid from the drug, but federal drug forfeiture account as recommended by.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, just, uh, update costs.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, Registry of These Housekeeping Services.
I move to approve a contract extension with Mike Spiro doing business as CNM cleaning for the period of January first, twenty twenty five, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty five, and authorize the Acting Chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Registered, Register of Deeds.
Second.
Any discussion on sending this contract?
I, I have some discussion, um, that's a little bit, it, it correlates to this, so I want to thank Kathy for thinking through ahead of time with the new building coming, um, and this makes complete sense. Um, however, I, I do think that it's time that, um, Commissioners start to think about. Um, I know County Attorney Conway had mentioned needing some space over at, uh, at the courthouse. My point being is, is we probably need to start thinking about buttoning things up over there as far as, I think, you know, the, the contract, uh, with the state. If we have to extend that, how, how, how that's going to work. But, um, yeah, I know it's six months out, or eight months out, but, but maybe by Kathy bringing this up, I, I think it's a good idea to stop thinking about some of those logistics.
Yeah, I mean, I assume that will be part and parcel of the new year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can just speak up a little bit. I, I've been thinking about that myself and, um, talked to my office administrator about reaching out to the state, uh, to see, you know, what we're looking at in terms of cost and things like that. So, so I am working on that over here and we'll bring that to you all at some point, so.
Right.
Okay, so this discussion is really not related to the housekeeping services contract. So unless you have more comments on housekeeping services, I'd like to vote on this motion.
Could I just bring it back to this, which is just for the, um, the prices are remaining flat for that contract extension, which is nice. And again, some of the timing is to, just to give background, is to correlate so that, um, when we make the transition to the new building, that we can have a new contact for probably, for, you know, housekeeping overall.
Right, agreed. All right, Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, next we have Department Head Date, uh, Updates, and we'll start with Allison.
Hi, it's Allison K. Costy, Senior Director of Human Resources. Um, just reminded that the Blood Drive is from twelve to four-thirty tomorrow in Hilton. If anybody is, um, wants to participate in that, please do. If you have any friends, neighbors, or anybody, just send them down to the Hilton Auditorium tomorrow. Um, we do have the, um, it's been a tough battle for the Halloween, um, voting, I understand. I don't know the results, but those will be announced on Monday. I think tomorrow is the last day of votes, so make sure you get that out there. Um, Julie and I attended the HR STP conference and it was a fantastic conference. A lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, sessions related to AI and how that's going to impact organizations and companies across nationally. There are some things going on in the state of New Hampshire with some, already some laws on that, but it will be free-form publicity, chat GPT, which probably people are using now, Gamma, um, which is a presentation and slides, some of the ones that they have utilized, um, in the HR region. You know, they gave us some insight on that and stuff, kind of encouraging us to go out on those platforms. It's better. Looking at them and seeing what some of the consequences could be, um, as an organization. So lots more on it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's so scary. It's a great tool, but it's also super scary.
Uh, we'll go to Finance. Chuck?
As usual, um, month after quarter end is crazy. Luckily today is the last day of that month following quarter end. So I'll be wrapping up the ARPA fund today and monthly, or fortunately, that's the last thing to be. Everything else has been done, whether it's payroll or grant-related or application-related for grants or what have you, so. Good news there. This, uh, this is the normal, um, business who are looking at more and more, um, other grants as well. As part of the construction meeting this Tuesday, we did a, uh, a tour and, uh, it's amazing to see the progress that's going on inside. So I think that the parks are going where they're really going to love it, so.
So Kathy, I could get a good view of what your office is going to be because they have plastic on the outside, but they had to the north, no, to the west side, I guess, uh, where your kitchen is, right next to your office, they had it open, so that's a great view out over the fields, so I'll, I'll tell you that. But, I mean, it's going to be a great space, the amphitheater, all the concrete's all poured and everything. So it has a nice easy steps down, you know, multiple levels, like four levels. So everyone's going to see like a hundred, no one's getting an obstructed seat. So it's, it's all, it's going to be great.
I heard Kathy's got the best office in the building.
But she has literally the, the corner office facing south and west, so, yeah.
Nice. All right, uh, Leila, do you have anything that you'd like to update us on?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Then we'll move into Zoom land and start with Sheriff Chuck. Messiah.
Good morning. Uh, nothing really new to report. Continue to be busy over here and happy Halloween.
Great, thank you, Sheriff. Uh, Chantel?
Um, good morning. So Census is a hundred and thirty-three at the nursing home, forty-seven at. Um good morning, so census is a hundred and thirty-three at the nursing home, forty-seven at the assisted living. Um for both the assisted living and nursing home, we have no COVID residents, but we do have one staff member on each side. Um for general updates, just continuing to look at systems, contracts as Commissioner Coyle mentioned. And working on staffing, we are closer to bringing um the contract before the board for healthcare service group. Um the RFP for dietary is close to the final draft and then myself and two of my team members also attended a conference. Um and there was a lot of AI conversations as well, but um a lot of good vendors, different um pieces. And we'll be probably connecting with um Chuck, cause there were a few grants. That um I was able to see that are for activities and to increase engagement, so to be able to explore some of those as well.
Great.
Great, thank you, uh Kathy Stacy.
Good morning, um few things, had a couple of large cash deals. One for, well, waiting for it to come back is an eight million dollar cash deal in Rye and a a three point eight million dollar cash deal for house in Rye. Um so uh real estate's moving, which is nice. I wanted to um comment on the invitation for uh this Indeed Quick Apply. Um and just comment because obviously um Becky has signed up for this and she is getting inundated with junk mail. And it it's a problem, you know, I don't know why we're getting it, I mean, welcome to Indeed and then then we start getting all these things. Um you know, if you want to, better people, fill out these these, all of this, you know, profile information and so, I mean, I obviously, you know, we don't wanna be getting all of this stuff on top of everything we're doing, so I just I just wanted to comment on it because it's it's kind of a a pain, I haven't even signed up yet. Um and I'm going to, but we also, I know that uh uh Autumn is working on, one of the things they want to send all kinds of stuff to your cell phone and they wouldn't allow you to put in like the the county phone number. Um but that's an issue because um obviously, I don't want, I you know, I have a county cell phone and I don't wanna be getting all kinds of junk on my cell phone, I I just, it's, to me, it's a it's a waste. So I just wanted to comment on that, just so that you understand what's happening. Um and the other thing I wanted to do is I wanted to talk about an issue that arose this week with regards to a request for copies or a request for information and and I I wanna apologize to Jude Gates because I last week mentioned to Commissioner Gardew that he could probably, whatever information he wanted, he could get off of two plans that were had been done some years ago by Jim Vera. That I assumed that Jude had copies in her office and if she did, she could probably make copies, cause she has a big plan printer. And that, those plans will show you every deed that goes into the property. Um and, you know, that was on Friday, that discussion was on Friday, um and we, you know, so. And you know, so just so that you know, I you know, I know that Commissioner Godu sent me a request on Monday for the copy of that deed from Seabrook. But also any and all other uh deeds and stuff that that pertain to Rockingham County or Rockingham County Commissioners. And my response was why, and um the thing is, I'm not doing that, that is not a function that I'm gonna be doing. I mean, I'm a, I am an attorney, I know how to do title research, but I am not spending hours doing title research for Rockingham County, it it to me, it's 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 a waste of of my good time. And then I know the onus was put on Jude who called me yesterday and I felt badly, cause I said to Jude, I'm not doing it. If you guys, if this, if the board wants title work done on the properties that we own and the butters. You can hire somebody to do that, okay, cause I am not going to do that. That, you know, to me, unless you wanna hire me to do that, and we're talking about a lot of money, cause that is a, it's a huge endeavor. I know I sent the commissioner eleven pages of indices, which was grantor and grantee. Which means you gotta go through every single one, you you gotta follow the whole trail, that's a lot of information that I just. You know, if the if the board is seeking to find out and and get some type of a file that that compresses everything. My suggestion is you hire somebody to do that. So th- those are my comments, you know, so.
I I should add this, I would like to just comment. When I learned that uh we owned a cemetery plot and we were unaware that we had this ownership of this, I thought it was a simple search. To just make a search of all of the Rockingham County properties, obviously, that's not the case. And I I'm just concerned to know, interested to know what it is exactly that we own.
I I guess if I may, and I just feel like this, we cut, we have had these conversations before. That we could not be unilaterally making demands of department heads to to task with work, like this, and I, your intent may not have been anything other than a quick deed research, but if, like, I would have told you, I, that that request is massive. And but that's why.
And she did, and that was I dropped it.
And that's fine, but I'm just saying, generally speaking, that would be something that we would discuss. That we should be discussing as a board before we're asking um significant work of and outside the scope of their department, really, we're talking about surveys and title work and things like this, that's kind of outside the wheelhouse of.
I know hundred percent agree.
So I'm gonna chime in, this is the first, I'm hearing of this, uh I agree one hundred percent with Commissioner Coyle. You know, we're a body of three. Not one individual commissioner should go rogue and start requesting this stuff, um especially when they don't realize what the costs are gonna be, hey Kathy, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have you do it anyway, because I think it's sort of a conflict. Uh ethically, um so I, you know, that would be the last thing I have you do, um and I'm not, I'm not hiring anybody, because I don't, I don't know what the what the end goal was, just to find out what we own for land, is that what you were looking for?
I I just wanna know what we own, we're in charge of it, I'd like to know what we own, that's all. And I thought it was a simple request, obviously, it's not a simple request, and so we'll have to discuss it at another time, if there's uh some need to, for the commissioners to understand what properties we own. But for now, uh if there's no issue.
I'll give you a little tip, if you go to Visions Appraisal in each town and you put in Rockingham County, you may find what we own. And you can do that on your own. But anyway, and then you don't, we don't have to incur a cost and we don't have to tie up precious resources for human rights.
Okay, anymore Kathy, VR report?
No, but thank you and happy Halloween, everybody.
Thank you, okay, Jude Gates.
Good morning, everyone, Jude Gates, Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT. All is well in facilities, I have nothing new to report this week. It's it's nice to have um two electricians and two plumbers on board, we're we're pecking away at some backlog and it feels good to have a full, we're still down three shift technicians. But it feels nice to have a full crew on days, so we're getting there, thanks very much.
Thank you, Jude. Attorney Conway.
Good morning, everybody, hope everybody's doing well. Um things are good here, we we are still a bit short-staffed and we're super busy. Um jury trials are sort of in full swing, for some reason in the fall, things just get crazy, but um I apologize for not being at the the meetings, I I think I've been in sort of back-to-back jury trials and things have just been crazy here, um. But things are going good, we're we're moving along, we're having some successful uh cases in terms of verdicts and and things are going pretty well, um we did just briefly discuss the satellite office or, you know, my desire to have a satellite office here. Um I am working on that and I'm going to be in touch with the state again to see what the cost would be. What space, if any, is available to us um and work on that in the future, and additionally, I know Commissioner Coyle had asked me to get some numbers to her regarding our cases and um how many cases are being resolved in Circuit Court and that type of thing, so I'm working on that as well. Um and we'll get it to you as soon as I can.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, that, uh Jason Henry.
Morning, everybody, Superintendent Henry, uh happy Halloween, uh we are at one forty this morning, uh I say thank you to Jude, it's nice to have the electricians. We have uh multiple keyboxes that have been going up, which is uh everybody's keys go into this box, they're locked in there and you can take them up by biometrics, which makes it so, you know, keys don't disappear on us, they alarm when they're out too long and those kinds of things, um. And it's nice that she has these people now to onboard to be able to do that, so that's fantastic. Uh last week, uh we're at one forty in-house, last week, we had the a hundred and twenty-fourth academy graduation. And I'm happy to announce that Officer Sage Wolf was the uh academy honor grad for us. Which is um, the honor grad is picked by students and um the teachers, one from each academy. And they get to take the academy flag back to their facility till next academy, where they show up and give a speech at the next academy. So it's a, it's really neat, only one honor graduate from each academy, so we're pretty proud of her achieving that. Um we are K, our new case, uh MAT case manager starts next week. Um we had a great divisional meeting yesterday, um uh going over a lot of good things, but we had the sheriff's department come down, um Dr. Cunningham and his crew to go over evidence collection and um report writing, so collaboratively working back and forth with them. Uh which has been great, helpful for staff. And Mary Beth uh in programs and Ivy Sue, very much looking forward to the conference, they have put together a wonderful PowerPoint and with um all kinds of resources on uh the EAP process or IEA process, I should say, uh they're gonna be teaching that at the conference. So that'll be really good, I know, we're we're excited for them to be able to teach that and represent Rockingham County.
I was so excited seeing that on the, I looked up the agenda and I was like, oh, Mary Beth, I was very excited to see that on the agenda.
Yeah, I I, when they were looking for instructors, I said, hold on, and I I talked to Mary Beth, this is something what she would do, and she said, absolutely. And the counties are clamoring for it, because it's very difficult, as you know, I'm, you're dealing the world of getting people into the state hospital and dealing with the IEs in general and all the paperwork that goes involved with it and timeframes, um I'm some of the counties are literally looking forward to this, cause they're struggling with this and needs it needs to help, so, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Jason. Alright, that concludes our department head updates, uh next is new business, old business, anybody have any newer old business they'd like to bring up?
Some old business, I'm just sort, you know, I uh working with uh Quest Labs. Um it's coming in substantially lower in any costs for the I've also reached out to COE H to ask them if we can um dissolve our contract with them December first without any financial consequences, because they sent us the letter for the night, so I'm working with that. And I've asked them to do uh a pre-inflated physical on our candidate for our position, because they can't do it themselves, so I'm working on that, so it is working, but I will be talking to Chuck a little bit more about the cost for the um Quest Labs and stuff like that, it'll be an online platform and Martha has been engaged with some of those conversations too. Because she talks, the window that she used to talk to and uh all the information she's giving back with us on it is uh very positive. Great, so thank you.
Great.
Very good.
That's great, thank you.
Commissioner Chirichello, you have something to bring up?
Maybe a couple things. Um first off, um I learned last week that Commissioner Godu mentioned himself that he had a friend who sold insurance product. And he was trying to get into Department of Corrections for his friend to go in there and make a sales pitch to employees. And I'm troubled by it, and I'll tell you why. You know, two years ago, who came in and you tried to get your friend Geno a six hundred thousand dollar job on the bill. And of course, we all had conversation about that and that didn't materialize, which is fine, and um being upfront and honest, I I didn't chime in more about that, because I thought that that was really a learning experience for you, being somebody new. Uh and, you know, I thought that maybe you sort of learn your lesson on that one and then to find out that you're bringing friends in to make money uh is completely wrong, so apparently you have not learned your lesson. And uh I I personally think that it may benefit you to somehow take an ethics class, I know it's required, I know in the real estate world real estate agents are required to take ethics every two years. Um uh I know the attorneys also have something similar, I I think that that would benefit you, because, but personally I I think you're gonna run into some trouble. Uh and I don't know if this friend of yours also buys products from you, printing products, I don't know if this is a quick pro, probe type thing, because he buys from you, you're gonna try to get him into the county the wrong way, it should have came to the commissioners before you trying to set up um between the superintendent and the HR director, so um I'm I'm extremely disappointed in that and I I think again, you you need to be called out on that, um. That's number one, number two, I I don't, do you wanna chime in?
I'm sure, I mean, I'm happy to, I don't, I I don't see it as an ethical issue. He disclosed that he, I mean, we live in New Hampshire, so everybody knows everybody, but um he disclosed to that he had a friend that's in this business and he passed it on to Superintendent Henry and my understanding is Superintendent Henry and Allison vetted it and that it's not uncommon for, it's like as I understood it, cause I superintendent, I spoke to, he's my liaison, he spoke to me, he just said, you know, I think this is a good opportunity. We talked about some of the limitations, I know Allison worked on, you know, limitations as it relates to other insurance we have. And it's not, if he had, if Commissioner Godu had done something, made demands or was heavy-handed in his approach or made, said you must do this, but he was like, hey, talk to the guy and see. And so it was, as I understood it, and superintendent, my conversation was from Superintendent Henry was that yeah, he thinks that this individual would be a good, um would be like something that the um employees might be interested in seeing, very clear that this was not cut tied to the county, this is no way tied to, he's known, there's no requirement and that I, we talked specifically about making sure there was eh no connection to the county, but I I mean, we didn't, we didn't raise this issue when, you know, I know Commissioner Godu had previously said oh, he knows this recruiting firm and Allison vetted it and came back and was like, it's gonna be really expensive, and then we all said not for us, so. I mean, as I see it, there was nothing that was underhanded in, so I'm fine with it.
Alright, so we just have a disagreement there, I mean, uh I I do think it's it's more about appearance and I I don't like that. And then finding out with, with Kathy Stacy's same thing, so we act as a board, bring it to the board first, that's the way I kind of do it, but there's differences of opinion and and I can appreciate that, that's that's number one. Number two, I tried, I asked to put on the agenda the fact of of naming a chairman, because last week I made a motion to vacate the acting chair. Um because of the the claims that he makes in public, which are untrue. Um Commissioner Coyle had seconded that, but then the discussion turned to tabling that for a week. Um so, when I asked to put it on the agenda, Commissioner Godu took it off as acting chair, because he didn't wanna deal with it, I guess. But.
That's not a good characterization.
Alright, so then tell me why you took it off?
Well, there was a motion on the floor that was tabled, uh and if you wanna bring up that motion again. Uh this is the appropriate time to do that, it wasn't us, the the making it as a separate agenda item didn't seem appropriate, so if you wanna bring up the tabled motion.
I will, but I wanna clarify, the mo- the motion was to table for a week.
Here we are.
But it should have been on the agenda.
Didn't, no, it doesn't need to be on the agenda, it's a tabled motion and a member needs to bring it up again. Uh and we can discuss it.
I think it technically, from a technical standpoint, I think if it's just table indefinitely, it doesn't reach the agenda. But if it's tabled with a specific date, which in this case it it was table for one week, I think the remedy is to table it and then it should be under old business.
As a tabled motion.
Yes, but it should have reached the agenda under old business on this two weeks agenda, because it was tabled with a finite.
Yeah, the agenda, the agenda request was not to bring up the tabled motion. Um it could have been on here, but here we are and we can, you brought it up, so um I'll assume that we're gonna talk about the, uh we're gonna talk about the tabled motion.
Well, I'll have the first tabled motion to take it off the table, so I'll make that motion now.
Second.
Now, there's no discussion on this. Commissioner Chirichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor to vacate the chair. And the motion has been seconded. So do we have further discussion? We discussed before, do we have further discussion today?
I have further discussion. Um, thank you. So last week when I asked you, you said you had done the research. And let us know when I said we ended, we came up with a twelve million dollars. I'm gonna ask you, do you do the research and can you share?
Sure. Um, when we got the completed budget uh numbers from Harvey. I put together a uh, a a budget for what the whole project was gonna cost. Just so that I would be aware. I did my own work on this. And um my budget came out to eighty three million dollars. And um, the eighty eight million dollars came by in my head uh that I. That I mentioned at the, on that interview, that I think it was eighty eight million dollars. That included uh what I had considered uh five million dollar cons- contingency that we should have available. Um, you know, on the project just to make sure that we were covered if anything changed or we decided as board that we needed to make changes. Uh, past that, I kind of concluded that we had plenty of money in our on reserve uh fund. Uh, if we needed contingency money, so that wasn't necessary. So the total project uh cost from the beginning to the end. I estimate at eighty three billion dollars and I mentioned eighty eight million dollars because I was including. The five million dollar contingency and that was a reference to a budget that I put together, not actual expenses. Uh, I don't have analysis, an analysis of those actual expenses because the way the budgets were presented to me is not the same way. That the um. The expenses uh have come in. I was going to keep track of each line item that I had in the budget. Uh and that they had budgeted, but I wasn't able to do that conveniently. So I'm le- left that to uh. Director Finance and I've just been sitting on this project for my own certification.
Thank you. Um, I'm still concerned that you're out in public making comments without the detail. Um. Saying that's, the the total cost was eighty eight million dollars. So I still, my my concerns are still there. Um. I still feel. That our three commissioners, you have the least amount of experience and that's not a fault of your own, it's just a simple fact. Um, of of that and I have those concerns still remaining. So that's the comment that I'd like to say. Um, I I feel that. Uh, the acting chair needs to be come, come to the table with active information and uh. Therefore, that's why I made that motion to vacate the acting chair. I don't know if Commissioner Foyle has anything to add. I don't know.
Um, ultimately, I feel this way. I feel that, I think I said this last week, which and I'm gonna repeat those sentiments, which is. The import of. Being as accurate as possible in your delivery of data and information. That said, I think what I'm hearing from you is you made a mistake. And I don't like that your, their misrepresentations are occurring. I don't think, I like, I. Hope that this is a. Significant learning exercise to say this is not okay, like you come back through, but at this point, I, we are. Five days from election, we have, this board will be collective for another, what, eight meetings or so? And I don't think it's in the interest of the county to make any changes. I think we should hold ground um. And work our way through to the, I mean, it just, we've had a, I don't want to create more turmoil, turmoil within the. Um, for everybody at this point. And so I am not going to support the vacating of the chair or. Any changes.
Very good.
Any further discussion? All right, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
No.
Commissioner Chirichello?
Yes.
And I vote no. Okay. Next, we go to public comment. Tom, would you like to make any comments today?
Yep, happy Halloween, everybody. I didn't know how to dress up today, so I guess I'll just be a movie star one more day. Uh, but anyway, last night I got to, uh, I was at a candidates night last night. In Brentwood with about sixty to seventy people and obviously the new building came up. With some residents and I told them I'm the public and I would try to answer the best I can. Uh, and obviously my opponent uh. With five, six days yesterday and five days, they didn't show up. But I answered best, there was three questions. One of them about. The road impact and I tried to explain to them, look, we go to the courthouse now, we go to the jail now, we go to Sheriff's Department, there'll be no. Road impact on roads being wrecked by a seventy million dollar building. The second thing was about permitting. And taxes. So uh, you know, I explained to them that, you know, the other counties do the same thing. They build a jail, they do all kinds of things in all the ten counties and we're no different than them, that we are municipality and we don't. Have to pay uh the taxes. So they're okay, they might not have liked it. And then the third thing is why are we not using. The electrical inspector, the plumbing inspector, the building inspector for the town of Brentwood and I. Pretty much explained to them that I'm the electrical inspector in Plastow and Sandown. If they built a building like that in Sandown, it's way over my head. And you know, it's almost like I used a synopsis last night. It's like being a veterinarian for a cat or a dog. And then you wake up the next morning and you're a veterinarian for an elephant. Uh, and they kind of liked that. So um, it it kind of calmed them down. There was a couple of selectmen. One of them is John Morgan, he's actually running for executive council. Uh, they they just wanted some monies down the road. They complained that, you know, fire is gonna have a lot more on their. On their shelf, the the police possibly could. I don't, I don't believe there's any difference in the police action that we have now, but they were concerned about. More work for the fire department. That was the one that they were trying to drive home. So. I don't know if you folks look at maybe doing something down the road. I thought I heard some rumbling that we might be, I think. Commissioner Chirichello had some, said something a few weeks back that they might assist the fire department. I didn't. Interact with them on that conversation because again, I'm just a public for a few more weeks. So. Uh, it was good though. It solved a lot of, a lot of the questions and people are pretty happy with the county and. You know, they're they're concerned about nursing shortages, they're concerned about the elderly. So. Uh, I thought it went pretty good. I thought it went pretty good. There was a pretty good turnout. It was like sixty or seventy people. You know, with six days to go to the election, it was a real, real good turnout. That, that's pretty much it. Everything else is good. Um, I don't, Commissioner Chair Chell, do you have something on the fire? I saw you raise your hand.
Well, it's, yeah.
I'm over here running the meeting, Jesus, I gotta just be quiet here.
It's actually in the minutes, uh, one of the minutes here that I had brought up the fact that um. Uh, we should look to using some upper money uh to to gift the town of Brentwood a little bit of money. Because they're gonna be, you know, God forbid there was a fire in the new building, you know, they they they've got to come over. Uh, in a system of that. Um, I do agree with you. I think that the permitting is way over their head. We we explained to that to them inspections up front, we, they they're used to doing residential, this is not residential. Uh, we had the state fire marshal uh inspecting everything, so. Um, and and I get maybe the frustration about the permitting, they they lose a little bit of money there, but we're a municipality, we're exempt from that. Um, but I do feel it would, it would show um good faith to the county. Um, by awarding a small amount of money to to Brentwood Fire Department or whatever the commissioners feel like they they can afford to do. Um, I think that that would be the right, the right thing to do. I did bring it up. It didn't, it just didn't advance any further.
I mean, theoretically, their workload shouldn't increase because they have to respond to the building.
Well.
But I mean, I'm not saying that it's not a good idea, but.
They would have to respond to the courthouse too.
Right. So, but I'm not saying that we shouldn't look into this. It's, I, I mean, it's certainly a good idea and all of. All of branches are always a wonderful thing. Um, but I, you know, in terms of this, like, there's a huge increase in their workload. Hopefully that's not going to be the case because they already have obligations too, but.
Um, and and I can appreciate that. I'm not looking at it from a workload pers- uh perspective. I'm looking at it as toward, you know. Um, for instance, I I don't know if there's any buildings that are equivalent to that in Brentwood. I'm not sure because I don't live in Brentwood. But typically you have equipment that really is what you've got. And if it's mostly residential, then that's what they're dealing with. This is unique building. Um, and so there may be equipment that applies that if we, if we were to gift them some money. So that they could buy that in order for them to protect us, again, goodwill. I think that that's a naveling thing to do. And I think that they would be happy. As as. Uh, Tom Tom Berrolo just mentioned, they they brought it out, you know, in a meeting. It's like, hey, they're building that building, we didn't get any money for it. I just think it's the right thing to do, but I'm one, I'm one commissioner.
Well, just since we're discussing this, uh, I'll just chime in. I don't really feel the need to extend an olive branch. But I do feel that if the fire chief uh would like to speak to us about. What it will take to protect the building and what equipment he may need. That would be unique to our circumstance, I'd certainly be uh amenable to discussing. Whether they're, they're short some equipment that would be unique because we built this building that they need. A log or ladder or I I have no idea what, I don't know anything about fire protection, but. Uh, if, I think that uh we should have a discussion with the police, with the fire chief. Just ask them if there's anything unique about the building that they're gonna need aside from the fact that they may get calls to come out and uh do some work or some rescue work. Um, but that's for later discussion.
I would just like to say, I'm a Brentwood resident and I can tell you that at town meeting, this has come up for this building. That they have to have a ladder truck in order to come to the, this particular building that we're in. So I think they would appreciate. Oh, great. There was a time when we didn't have a ladder truck, but I mean, this building's been here for a while.
Right.
But they often will bring that up and it'll become uh additional funds that they're asking the town.
Yeah.
For, for particular equipment. So I think them coming and explaining that would be a great idea.
Great.
We'll invite the fire chief to come in and talk to us and see um what he's got to say about what equipment he may be short. That would be in our best interest that he had. And then we can talk about how we might fund it or. How that might get funded.
Well, the, it would go a long way with the town, you know, the county cares, but I'm sure you care about that.
Thank you for that insight.
Welcome.
I'll um make it a point to uh in. Communicate with the fire chief and invite him to come and talk to us when he's uh prepared. Okay, great.
The only, the only other thing, the the only other thing is I had, you know, every time I go to the different towns to talk to. The uh solar comes up. So I did have uh the solar people that are against solar and I did have, I have like a following of these people that love windmills. The wind tur- wind turbine and Brentwood's got like six of them last night that were throwing hang grenades, but. Uh, I, you know, they, they're they're really, really happy with the building. I I can tell you, you know, Brentwood is real, real happy with this county, so. I was glad and I actually got a couple of Democrats that said they're voting for me in November fifth, so I was really thrilled to leave there.
Were they drinking? Was there drinks at that?
Now, they, yeah, they had water. Now that, I've never, I've only had to go to one place in Deerfield where they actually had me speak at a bar. But that's Deerfield. They had me speak at this Mar and Dad's Bar, Bar. It was really, really different. And I'm in there trying to be nice and everybody's got a beer in their hand, but. Uh, no, I don't do that, not one of them.
I'm just eating.
I'll do it next week when I'm up in the, up at uh the Mount Washington with you folks. We'll have a few beers.
All right. Thank you for those public comments. They were helpful. Uh, Allison, you have something to add?
I can just say this. Um, I was up at the H R Strategic and there is a, I just want everybody to know, the O D Ds to know that there is a cost to park your car. They never had that before, but it's a twenty dollar charge per day um for parking at the.
Mount Washington?
Washington. It was instituted this past year.
Even for.
Uh, you're talking about on the street. Yeah, but there is a thirty five dollar for valet, thirty uh twenty five dollar for valet. Twenty dollars if you're up in the main area, there's a twenty dollar, but you have to park farther down because I was just there and luckily. The H R Strategic Conference included that as part of their overall, but I didn't know about it. When I drove up, they were trying to charge me. So.
So, just a question on that.
I I would think that we ought to um cover the parking expense. It certainly would have been included. Uh, if, that when the request came in for all of these expenses, uh had we been aware. And had at each person that applied for the the money been aware that it was gonna be forty or sixty dollars. Uh, three days probably worth of parking, they'll try to get as well. That's sixty dollars for each car. I think that we need to uh figure out how to get the county.
There is a shuttle. I just don't know where that parking lot is. So if anybody's staying over, there is a shuttle, but I just don't know where that lot is. It wasn't where the normal lot is that you park, because you have to get a ticket and then. I'm not sure if that's the shuttle one or not. I think it's down farther.
Would you, would you contact or who, or? Who, can we contact somebody at the hotel and see if we can make arrangements that um. This would get paid. I I don't know if the rest of the commissioners are in agreement with this, but I'd like to know if they. No, maybe they'll cut us a deal. No, we got a whole lot of people coming in or maybe we just have to pay.
Well, there is a shuttle. I just don't know where that parking is that you park your car and then they shuttle you off. So.
Commissioner Chair Chell?
Um, what I would suggest is to um go to N H A C. And take a look at the contract that they signed because if that's not in there, they've got a hole to their contract. I would think that the marketing would be spelled out in the contract.
I think it was just instituted.
I just read N H A C.
Huh?
I just sent an email to N H A C about this.
Yeah, yeah. So Kathy, if it's not in the contract, they should waive it.
Right, right.
If it's not in the contract, they can charge it. If it's absent.
That'd be silence.
If it's.
I guess it's really an N H A C issue. Uh, as far as what should or shouldn't be included. In in any event, I. Uh, I look, I'd I'd just like to survey the other commissioners. Do you think that we ought to be covering the parking expense if in fact. Our uh employees are going up with this and they need to pay sixty dollars.
It does, I'm reading it now.
You would agree.
Sorry, there is a complimentary parking available at a nearby lot, but it's overnight self-parking is also available at twenty dollars per day. Contacted them because we were shocked when we got up there, so shame, excuse me.
Then I don't think we should cover it. It's like, if it's complimentary unless, and if there might be exceptions for. Um, based on sort of like. Um, physical limitations for anybody attending that might, you know, like need more to valet or something. And those instances, we should cover it, but otherwise.
So there's free parking available if you use the shuttle service.
So uh, just like, trying to real quick and Kathy, thanks for putting that email and I uh, I I contacted Kate Oregon real quick. Um, there is free parking. She's gonna send us the policy. Guests, it's thirty five dollars about valet. Overnight self-parking is up for twenty dollars. Day guest valet parking is the over twenty five dollars. Self-parking for. Ten dollars complimentary parking available by, at a nearby lot with shuttle service. Um, so if you're down and willing to park down the street, it's free, but she's gonna send us the policy. So that way you guys can review and help to make a determination.
If anybody came up.
Well, so then I guess we're gonna suggest that everybody use the free parking. Or pay out of your pocket to have a more convenient parking. There's some physical issue.
Some exception for whatever reason.
Okay. Uh, is there anything else? Then um, I would say that with our meeting is concluded with, and I would accept the motion to move into our non-public session.
So moved.
Commissioner Chirichello?
Yeah.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we, nine forty and we're moving into our non-public session.
And I think.
Thank you, everybody, for attending.
So we.
We have returned from our non-public session and Commissioner Foyle has a couple of motions for the two sessions that we have.
Sure, we had two non-public sessions with respect to the first uh non-public session. I moved to see those minutes until December fifteen, twenty twenty four. Because it's things to union matters and also could render opposed action ineffective.
Second. Second. Any discussion on
Go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there any discussion on this motion to seal these minutes until twelve fifty?
Only that with respect to that timing, believe at that point, the minutes be, can become unsealed.
Right.
Yeah.
I agree. Okay. Commissioner Chirichello?
I'm voting no, and the reason is, is I do not believe the topic uh is covered. I'm going to do one thing and should have been discussed in public.
Uh, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
On the second non-public, I move to seal those minutes indefinitely because um it could affect adversely the reputation of any person who doesn't remember this.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on these minutes? Uh, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chirichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, and now our next motion.
My favorite motion.
By all means, then.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Chirichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned.